Our meeting is called to order. A low call, please.
Council agency members Durham, Lingle, Rouget.
Here.
Mayor, Pro Tem, Vice Chair Cecily Martner.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Mike Samensky.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, the agenda that we published last week called for a closed session starting at 6:00 tonight. That meeting was not held. We don't have anything to announce because we didn't meet. So this is the opening salvo of our regular first February meeting. The item on the agenda for the closed session was merely a review of negotiation conditions with the various labor organizations in the city and with our designated negotiator. We will now ask for the invocation. Dwayne Armstrong, please.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for our city and for all the blessings we enjoy here in Lompoc. And we thank you for our leaders on the city council. Please give wisdom and guidance in every decision and direction for the benefit of all. We pray. Amen.
Do you follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Administrator's Status Report.
Mr. Mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to announce tonight my appointment of Mr. Bradford Wilkie to the position of Management Services Director effective yesterday. Following an open competitive recruitment, Mr. Wilkie was initially hired with the city of Lompoc to the position of Financial Revenue Manager in May of 2009. Mr. Wilkie previously worked nine years as Finance Director for the city of Gridley. He is an active CPA, has a bachelor's degree in business economics, and Mr. Wilkie is best described as a focused financial professional who is community-minded and well-liked and respected by his staff. I'm certain that the city of Lompoc and city council will be well-served with the Management Services Director Brad Wilkie, who will be giving two items tonight under New Business on council's agenda. I would also like to take this opportunity to advise council that I received an email from Mr. Mark Huskeren representing the 2010 census. And in his email, he congratulates the city of Lompoc for our dedicated workers, furthering the 2010 census program and commending the efforts of the following city staff: Dam McCaffrey, Richard Fernbaugh, Angela Nguyen, Charita Wagle, Arlene Pelster, and Lucille Breeze for their commitment, creativity, and participation contributing to the public awareness of the 2010 census campaign. And I too commend our city staff for their excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barcelona. Brad, I want to welcome you personally, I have previously, and we want to welcome you into the position you're holding tonight. Mr. Wilkie has been, as Ms. Barcelona said, with the city of Gridley for the last nine years. Gridley is a fellow Northern California Power Agency city, and many of the people at the NCPA and many of the commissioners up there know of Mr. Wilkie from his activities in utility billing. And all send you your best wishes. All were asking how you're doing, and we told them ahead of time a little bit about what Laurel is going to announce this week, and they all wish you the best, too. No one had a bad word to say about Brad. And this is after we hired him. Usually you can get a lot of that before you hire somebody. And I also want to comment on the census. It is to Lompoc's great advantage to count every person in town. Much of the money we receive from the state, much of the money we receive from the federal government, and funds that we receive for various programs are based on the population count in town, every individual. And there are people who have concerns about Big Brother knowing anything about them. It's a very strict law that prohibits the Census Bureau from using that information they collect for anything other than the legitimate purposes of providing the count. So if you hear of anybody that doesn't want to be counted, you can assure them that that's pretty closely watched, and it will really benefit Lompoc if they step forward and allow themselves to be a part of the count this year. Do you have any staff requests and announcements to follow those, Frau?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Council requests and announcements? Mr. Lingle.
Yes, I'd like to announce that at the last council meeting of January 19th, we discussed the possibility of one or two of us meeting with the local ministers in the community to discuss their ideas on the prayer before council. I did meet the following day, Wednesday, January 20th, with the local ministers and pastors of the community. And there's two different groups, and they together agreed that they would like us to consider a statement to be placed on the agenda for every day, every meeting. The wording of the statement would read like this: "The city of Lompoc endorses no religious faith or reflects and celebrates the many people of different faiths who reside here. The city council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community, with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God, and we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all citizens to pray as they feel led to pray." Then the individual to do the invocation would come forward. This would be either read by the city clerk or printed on the agenda for the meeting. There's a lot of discussion about who is an acceptable person to read, and this would be left up to the city council. We could have a rotating list. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to see if we can agendize this for a meeting in the very near future so we can discuss this in full council. And that way, we could have their statement, they could attend as well, and we could discuss it at the council meeting to decide what we want to do. So I'd like to see that agendized if possible.
Thanks, Mr. Lingle.
And I would like, if there's any support from the council members, I'd like to get some support from one or two of the council members.
I would second that request.
I'll support it. I need to see it to go over some of the wording.
I have a council, or I have a copy for each of you.
Okay. I'll third it.
We'll try to get that on possibly the next council agenda. Yes, sir. Mr. Durham, do you have some announcements?
I have a couple here. To begin with, I'm glad that Councilman Lingle jumped on board on that. That's been an issue that I think that we need to address, so thank you. To begin with, we have a father-and-daughter dance that's going to be coming up. The Parks and Rec is going to be putting it on February 5th, which is Friday, and Saturday the 6th. It's from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM, and I'm told that this sells out pretty quickly, so if you are interested in attending this, please contact the rec center as soon as possible and register. And this is for ages between 3 and 18. Excuse me. I had the pleasure Friday, the 22nd, to attend the senior health fair that the Park and Rec was in big support of. We had a fantastic turnout. We had about 50 vendors. The weather cooperated somewhat, rained off and on, but nevertheless, we had, and I'm guessing, but probably somewhere around 200 citizens come through the venue that was held at the Vets Building. And it was handled very well, and Vons did a great job taking care of us old retired guys that love coffee. They had refreshments for us. There are some good things that I found out about this council seat, and this next item is by far one of the best I've had so far. Saturday, the 23rd, I was given the honor to present a city plaque to retiring jailer dispatcher Nancy Faust after serving 25 years with the police department here in the city of Lompoc. I've known Nancy ever since I came in, well, when she came in, actually, because I was here about five years before she arrived. But we're going to miss her. I know the police department, they've got some big shoes to fill, and not because Nancy's big. Wednesday, the 27th, we held, well, we didn't, but we attended the consumer service training, which is, I call it Warm and Fuzzy. And Councilman Rouget and I attended that, and personally, I think it was an outstanding presentation put on by our staff. So I do agree that Beth Overby did a fantastic job with the hours that she had to present it. The other item was I had the pleasure of attending the Hay Bales and Cocktails. Yeah, I knew Ms. Anne Rouget forgot that. She was the emcee, and she did a pretty good job. It's just something about a microphone which surprised me, she didn't want to talk into. But Councilman Lingle was there also. We had a great turnout, and by the way, that's for the National American Bloom fundraiser. And again, I think there was probably every bit of 200-plus there. The food was outstanding. Laura Codova did a great job. All in all, it was a phenomenal afternoon. The last thing I'd like to bring up is tonight I attended, now Pastor B, it's okay, the Tatas at Tom's Hamburger. And what it is, it's really, it's a breast cancer awareness, and it's a team called the Tatas. And all the tips go to their team for Relay for Life. Over the next few months, you're going to see a lot of different Relay for Life programs from different teams. And I know this community has bent over backwards for many, many years with the Boob Patrol, Save Second Base, Hope Floats. And I applaud this community, and if you get a chance to attend one of these or drop by and just say hi and grab a soda and drop a tip, it's going to go to the Relay for Life, and it's a great, fantastic cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rouget.
I was also going to mention Hay Bales and Cocktails. I wanted to thank Tony for being our auctioneer. I am not afraid of stepping up to the microphone at any time. Also, it was called a customer service in-service. The whole city staff is being required to attend these customer service seminars. It's a two-hour seminars, and it was very well done. I was one of the ones that asked that we concentrate on this, as our city administrator did, too, about providing better customer service to our customers, which is the people. All of us are the customers. So anyway, it was a really good one. Also, on February 27th, the Lompoc Firefighter Foundation is going to be holding their fifth annual Fire and Ice Ball. It's a benefit for the Firefighter Foundation, raises money for equipment that firefighters request of us. So if you would like to come, I have tickets, $50 a person or $100 a couple. That is a hard thing to figure out. Anyway, they have a silent auction and a live auction, and Mr. Tony Durham will be there again with his auction. So if you're interested in coming, you can get tickets all over town, and a lot of us have the tickets for it to sell. So thank you.
Ms. Martner.
I would like to congratulate Mr. Wilkie on his promotion. Welcome aboard. You're going to have a lot of work coming up, and I commend you for the work. It's a really steep learning curve with a lot of difficult decisions and a lot of difficult analysis, so I really commend you. Thank you for serving. I guess I'm the one that doesn't do all the fun jobs. The only announcement that I have is I attended the Air Pollution Control District meeting. We started our session this year. We have this meeting quarterly. I am the person that is representing the city of Lompoc. This meeting was held in Santa Maria. The first six of them are held in Santa Maria, and the other six are held in Santa Barbara. There were no city expenses incurred in this meeting, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Martner. I have one announcement just regarding an item that will be on the agenda this coming Saturday at our workshop. The Saturday workshop was scheduled as a full-day workshop for review of the budget, our finances of the city, and to determine what other actions we should be taking, if any, regarding our current budget situation. But last week, at the meeting of the Santa Barbara Council of Governments, SB CAG, they discussed the funds that are needed to widen Highway 101 from Santa Barbara to the Ventura County line, and it's a very, very expensive process. They are sending a delegation next week to Washington DC to see if they can't get some more federal dollars for that action, which would then free up some of the transportation dollars for other projects in the county, including Highway 246 and some of the other more local projects. SB CAG asked every city in the county to pass a resolution stating the importance of 101 to traffic in the county. They were afraid that Washington may perceive the need only as something that affects the South County rather than the entire county. And they've recognized that agriculture from the North County relies on 101, defense access to the base relies on 101, tourism at Solvang, whatever, relies on 101. So it is a very important thoroughfare through the entire county, and they've asked the cities to pass a resolution stating the importance of 101 so that they can be taken back to Washington with that delegation next week. The request was made too late to get it on tonight's agenda, so we're putting it on Saturday's agenda, and it will, the resolution will be considered Saturday morning, is that right, Ms. Barcelona? Before we go into the financial workshop. So I wanted to mention that that was going to be on the agenda. I know there had been some comments in the community about the way the funding for Measure D, Measure A is passed, so that one will be a discussion Saturday morning. We'll move on at this time to the consent calendar, I'm sorry, to oral communications, a maximum of five minutes. Please direct your comments to the city council members. When you come to the podium, state your name and whether or not you're a resident of the city of Lompoc.
Good evening. My name is Ron Fink. I live in the city of Lompoc, and a couple of meetings ago, you all decided that the Pocket Park would be done with cooperation with a volunteer organization in the city. I represent Lompoc Valley Park and Pool Foundation, and we have submitted our paperwork to the city. We had a request from the city administrator for certain documents that was in the staff report. We submitted that today, and we look forward to working with the city to answer any questions that they have. Once the city's reviewed and approved our ability to participate in this project, we would like to come back and show you what the project consists of and give you a path forward about how we intend to proceed. We did meet with the city staff. We provided them with a number of what I would say were fairly crude drawings, but they're the best we had that we could do for free. So they have an idea of what our concept is. We had a good back-and-forth with them, and we think that we can move forward on this project once you've reviewed our paperwork and approved us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fink.
I'm a pastor here in town and also represent the Lompoc Ministerial Association. And first off, I just want to thank Councilmember Lingle for attending our luncheon on rather short notice. And I just wanted to come tonight, offer you a letter. One, it does state what Councilmember Lingle just read to you, so you have that. I know he copied it as well. And on behalf of the interfaith and the ministerial association, we would love to see that as an invocation policy. Also, at the end of this letter, there is a stipulation when you decide on this council policy that you can add to the bottom of it. If you refer to the second paragraph from the bottom, "The prayer should be cognizant of the many faiths in our community and shall not be used as an opportunity to proselytize or advance or disparage any faith or belief or the particular tenets or beliefs of individual faiths. The prayer leader may use the specific name of their God within the prayer so long as it is not used in a manner to proselytize or advance or to disparage any faith or belief or the particular tenets or beliefs of individual faiths." And I just want to offer our support as the ministerial association as you come to terms with the council handbook and how the invocation is going to be represented. Very last of that, I invite you to attend, if any wish to, the next Lompoc Ministerial Association meeting, which will happen on February 17th. And if you have a desire, again, just as Councilmember Lingle did, just to ask what any of us thought, and also to bounce some ideas off, and we would be more than happy to have any or all of you join us at that time, and as well to be a part of any council meeting where it is on the agenda for that. And I thank you for your stance and what we heard from Councilmember Lingle, that this is an important part and has been part of the history of Lompoc, and we just want to be whatever help and encouragement we can be. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lawrence, City of Lompoc. Evening, Mayor and City Council. As far as 101, it ought to be emphasized that that is one of our major highways, north-south, and five are our transportation routes. And when they're shut down or congested, then the whole state suffers. Coal transportation. We have noticed that coal is underutilized. Many of the buses are empty or only have one or two passengers. When it comes time to replace the present buses, the city should consider replacing buses with passenger cars or van-type vehicles. These type vehicles could handle the present passenger load, be more comfortable, and be less expensive to purchase and operate. The city could even purchase hybrid or electric vehicles, which would further help the environment. There would still be a requirement for transportation for handicap passengers. This requirement could still be met by modifying passenger cars or van-type vehicles. We are certain that replacing the present buses with passenger cars or van-type vehicles would result in considerable savings to the city and help the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Is there anyone else that would like to come, speakers, at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the oral communications and move to the consent calendar. There are only three items on the consent calendar tonight. The expenditure roster, which is every week, the minutes of the last meeting, and an ordinance, which we, this is the second reading, we heard it at the last meeting and had public comment on it and a full staff report. So this is all being dealt with at this time, and we'll ask for one motion. Ms. Martner?
I am prepared to present a motion.
Great.
I would move that we accept the consent calendar.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second. With those in favor of the consent calendar. Thank you. That passes unanimously. New business. New business. Master fee schedule update. Mr. Wilkie, it's your chance to tell us how we can pull ourselves out of this financial mess. How much are we going to charge in fees?
Mayor, council members, actually, one of the first things I'd like to make clear is that the, based on the cost indexes that have happened over the last year and a half, the recommendation is for the fee structure to be set at what the fee structure was last year, which is what was included in the budget for this cycle. So it's not adding anything, but it's also equal to what we expected it to be based on the volumes. So that's really the, having said that, the crux of it is that this fee schedule is the same as it was before, it's just coming back for re-adoption on an annual basis, and we're bringing it to you tonight for that re-adoption for the remainder of this fiscal Unless you have any other questions, I am done with that. I have some other items, but yes.
I have, it's not a question, but I would like you to educate me a little bit. I always had these issues with the CPI from an area that doesn't really have very little bearing with us. The CPI is based on Los Angeles Riverside, Orange County, and I know that this is a historical thing and that it has been always this way. Is there at any one point in time that this could be changed and we could follow a CPI that would be more representative of what happens in the city?
The main reason why it's based on the CPI of Los Angeles, Orange, is the federal government that publishes this has just a certain number of CPI indexes. One's national, and there are several that are regional, and the region of Los Angeles, Orange County, is the one that's closest to us. The next closest one is San Francisco, and they don't have one that's zero or more close to us.
I understand that. Now, is there any one point in time that this gets reviewed every 20 years, perhaps, as population grows?
Well, actually, that was one of the discussions.
Life between San Francisco and LA.
The federal government doesn't do that, but the one thing that we can do is, one of the constraints put on us by Government Code 66016 and 0617, is that the fees that we charge need to be cost-based, so they can't be any greater than what the cost of providing that service is. And what we can do, what we've, one of the suggestions was made, I think during the budget process, was that we do a fee study to evaluate the existing fees to see if they are at the right level for our community, and that would be one way to do that.
Okay. And that would be more a part of what really, you know, is significant.
That would be based on our cost in our area and what the various fees are that we have here. So it would be based on our city fee structure, cost structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on the item before us tonight. Mr. Lynn.
John Lynn, City of Lompoc. In prior, oh, I'm sorry, 3.08, the fire false alarm fee. In some prior discussions on this fee, I was told that the city did not have a fee in place to charge for fire false alarms. And I checked with Brad earlier, and he said it's been there for a while. Now, this fee is a good idea, and it's been in place for a while, but we're not charging it. You wouldn't think there would be a lot of fire false alarms. If you recall, many years ago, we instituted a false alarm fee for commercial burglar alarms. And when we did that, the number of false alarms dropped, my recollection was in excess of 80%. We do not have, we have not enforced this on We do not have, we have not enforced this on our fire alarms, and so we constantly send trucks out to respond to false alarms. And even worse, these are generally battalion responses, and I found that out in the middle of the night when I had to go open a building for one of my customers for the fire department. So that means we roll two trucks, and we have not sought reimbursement from these people. I think the other question with regard to the way the fee structure is worded is whether that fee is for one truck or a battalion response. I don't know if this is the appropriate moment for the council to clarify that or if it's a staff decision, but that certainly needs to be done because two trucks cost more than one. Also, line three says "fourth response," but it should read "fourth and subsequent responses" because the way it's worded now, we wouldn't be able to charge for the fifth one. With regard to the 4.02, the police false alarm fee, traditionally, this has been applied to commercial facilities and alarms. I have been told that today, the bulk of the false alarms are private residences and that there are some residences that have a chronic problem with this. I believe the council should make it clear to the staff that this fee applies to both residences and to businesses and begin charging these fees. And I think we'll see the same thing. We'll probably have an 80% drop in those fees with just writing, sending out a letter. Now, there are two ways to fill our public service need. One is that we hire more firemen and policemen, and the other one is that we reduce demand. On that side, 4.05 relating to public disturbances. Several of my employees are compulsive scanner listeners, and there are some apartment complexes that, through their management policies, generate multiple police responses per week, every week. The police department, in conjunction with the Rental Property Association, offers free information on proven techniques that minimize problems in police responses. So we provide the help to these people now, and I have sat through those programs. They're outstanding. As our city works to do more with less, the diligent enforcement of this fee would provide the same two benefits. First, it creates an incentive to control the tenants' problems and reduce police responses. And if they don't, guess what? We get a revenue stream. If we don't have a collection mechanism in place for these fees now, we should certainly adopt it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Do we have any other public comment? Bring it back to council. What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Rougey?
I have a question. On the police and fire false alarm fees and all that, does, when someone pays that, does that money go into the general fund or to the separate fire and police accounts? Mr. Wilkie?
They go into the general fund. Yeah.
Okay. If they're not designated, then it wouldn't go back to police or fire, right?
Correct. They're general fund.
Fees.
Fees, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Lingle.
Mr. Wilkie, on 4.11, the daily jail rate. I believe we just recently had an increase in our jail rate, and I do not believe that $80.40 reflects the increase we had.
It looks like Chief Dabney is looking up that. At this point in time, I don't have an answer for that question.
What I'll do is, if, when we make the recommendation to approve or disapprove, we may just want to add that, that change, if found to be.
Okay.
Found, we'll make it, institute it with the change then. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments? No comments? So we have, do we have a motion? Recommended disposition, side?
I move that we adopt the recommendation of the staff.
We have a motion? Let me.
Okay. Because Councilmember Lingle asked that the fee raised for jail rate, if that, if that changes, that that would be included in this fee schedule.
There's also been a recommendation from the public that we amend 3.08, item number three, to read "the fourth and subsequent responses."
I believe the chief has an answer for the jail rate.
Yes. This council, back in, I believe it was April of 2009, approved a resolution to increase the booking fee to $130, and that would be per booking, not the daily jail rate. What the daily jail rate applies to is, we have a segment of people that go through court, and they're ordered to do what we call "pay to stay" or do weekends as part of their sentencing. And so they will literally pay to stay in the jail over the weekend, and so they pay their own way. So that's what the daily jail rate is, as opposed to the booking fee.
Okay. Then I take back my amendment to the recommendation. Rescind my amendment is what you're supposed to say.
We have, we have a motion. We do have the one item, 3.08. We're, I agree with Mr. Lynn's comment that it should say "fourth and subsequent responses." If we can make that.
Okay. Then I will add, all right. Let me start again. Donna, got it? I move that we adopt Resolution Number 5605, parentheses 10, regarding the master fee schedule, and we provide for the annual recalculation of the fees based on increases in the Consumer Price Index, and then we change the wording to indicate under 3.08, false alarms. Number three, there would be "fourth response and subsequent responses" added.
Thank you. Do you want to second that?
I'll second that motion.
Do you have any other comments, any other comments on the, on the motion on the floor? Let's vote. Item passes unanimously. Move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the investment policies. Mr. Wilkie?
I'll try to make this one short as well. The investment policy is also something that needs to be adopted on an annual basis, and it typically has been adopted in a January-December timeframe. So there are a couple minor changes to the investment policy, but I do want to point out the investment policy has outlined three priorities for what the city treasurer does in regards to the investments of the city. The first priority is safety of the investment, preservation of capital. And that's very important at any point in time, but more important in these trying economic times. There have been some agencies that go outside of the investment policy and have lost, lost money. We have been, had a policy like this, and we've followed it for as long as we've had the policy. The second priority of the policy is to provide for the liquidity needs of the city, to provide for the daily operations of what's needed. When excess cash is available, we can get it invested and move that back in when we need to pay bills. And the third and final lowest priority is to achieve a return on investment. Investment earnings is a very valuable thing to the budget, general fund, and the rest of the funds, but it is the third priority. The policy states that we should try to exceed the three-year, three-month T-bill rate, and it may be surprising, but we're beating that by about five times right now. However, that five times is about a half, half a percent return on investments. Right now, the three-month T-bill is 0.1% earnings. So we're in an environment where investments are pretty slim out there, but the priority of the city continues to be the safety of the existing investments that we have. One thing that I mentioned in the staff report is that the LEAF system, which provides for investments to local agencies, has raised their limits from $40 million to $50 million per account, and that one change was made in the, in the policy. And that's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Any questions or comments from Mr. Wilkie at this time? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Are there any comments from the, from the public on this item on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. What's the wishes of the council with respect to this item? Mr. Lingle.
I, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept staff recommendations on the investment policies.
Tony?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Are there any comments, discussion? Speak for or against? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. That concludes the new business item on the agenda. We only have written communications. Have we received any? None to report? We have another oral communications period, two minutes at this time, if anyone would like to speak to the council. Seeing none, we'll close that one. Final item is council, last chance for council comments, and this is the time where we comply with the law to announce any meetings that we've attended at the expense of the city. Mr. Lingle.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that this past week, I was at a three-day seminar for the NCPA in Sacramento, and it was a city expense, actually, NCPA expense, city expense in a hearing.
Thank you. I would also like to report that since the last meeting, I have attended several meetings in Sacramento on three different topics. The California Municipal Utilities Association has studied legislation and proposed legislation and proposed regulations this year regarding water and electric and analyzed them. They yesterday had a Capitol Day presentation where I met with Senator Padilla's office, Senator Mark Leno's office. I met with Senator Tony Strickland, and I met with Senator Maldonado's office, but could not meet with the member himself. He was getting ready for hearings tomorrow on his nomination to be Lieutenant Governor, so he was not able to meet with me. On the assembly side, I also spent some time with Sam Blytley. The, and I had an appointment with Pedro Nava to, but the Democrats all went into a retreat yesterday afternoon, canceled all their appointments so that they could decide how to deal with Mr. Maldonado's nomination later this week on the, on the appointment to, to Lieutenant The message is well-received, and we've, our legislators, I have to, I want to comment because they have been so, so receptive to things in the past. One of the issues that, that we will see again this year is an attempt to pass a bill that allows the California Public Utilities Commission to give direction to public utilities like ours and to lay fines or other penalties on if we fail to observe their directives. Last year, when the legislation was being heard on this matter, Senator Tony Strickland was co-author of a bill that established a renewable electric portfolio standard where every electric utility should reach 33% of green renewable power by 2020. He was a co-author of that bill, and when it was amended by Senator Semidion to put the requirement for the CPUC to, or the authority for CPUC to penalize us in that bill, Senator Strickland stood up and said he would vote against his own bill if that amendment stayed in there. He was, was very responsive. The night of the vote, I was called by someone that attended the hearing in Sacramento and said, this man stood up, and he said, "I will not be able to go back and face my constituents in Lompoc if I allow, or if I vote for this issue." So it was something that we had lobbied him on, and he was quite responsive, and I want to, want to recognize that. We talked about that again yesterday. What we've done in our electric power in the city of Lompoc is greater than what's being set in bills right now. They want 33% renewable power by 2020. We're at 33% right now. We're making our power with geothermal steam. We're making our power with solar panels. We're making our power with some small hydroelectric units that make up that 33%. 95% of our power is, is made with, from the facilities we own without putting any pollutants in the air. But because of environmental concerns about dams, they won't let us count it as earth-friendly power if it's, if it's power made by a large dam. So that's why there's a difference between our 33% and the 95%. But we, we did talk to them yesterday and, and established assurance that they will look at the bills that, that were, that are being put forward this year and keep Lompoc's view in mind. We also attended a meeting of the League of California Cities where the Environmental Quality Committee looked at water policy, looked at draft of other policies, and while they were at it, they looked at the, one of the pieces of initiatives that's going to be on the June ballot. They wondered whether they should instruct their lobbyists to take a position on these various issues. That committee is a 42-person committee. I spoke strongly in favor of an opposed position on that legislation by the League of Cities. Pacific Gas and Electric was there with, with one of their leaders to speak, to tell why they put the item on the ballot. The League accepted my recommendation with a 40-to-zero vote. The full committee voted to oppose that legislation in June. The final meeting was the NCPA meeting, where we had a strategic planning session all day, talked, looked at economists that were, that were looking, trying to tell us what the future might be. They looked at Senator Alex Padilla, spoke to us at lunchtime about electric legislation that he sees forthcoming during this year. And we had a consultant that the Northern California Power Agency hired to go into all 15 of the cities that make up NCPA and analyze their rates. And he was, he reported to us that in all 15 cases, the public power rates are lower than being offered by PG&E as a privately-owned or a for-profit corporation in other areas of the state. So it was, it was pretty good news regarding our rates. Unfortunately, the rates are a little, electric rates are a little closer this year than they were last year to PG&E's rates, but a lot of it is fixed costs that are laid on by the state for transmission and, and other things where, when the same, when the same rates are, are laid on the electricity of both us and, and the PG&E, there's not much opportunity for us to beat them in prices. So those were the, the meetings that, that I've attended and meeting yesterday. Got home at 11:30, driving, driving back from, about 11:15, driving back from, from Sacramento. Cecilia?
I'd like to make a final comment. Mr. Mayor, all of what you have told us is, basically sets Lompoc apart on the utilities. We offer cheap rates. We are very, we should use this to our advantage, and I have mentioned this in the past, and I encourage again the city staff to look at potential incentive plans for businesses where these low utility rates, these fantastic environmentally sound utility rates can actually be used as a tool to bring more revenues to the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Quite a bit of discussion with Senator, with Assemblyman Blakesley on that subject yesterday. What we've done in Lompoc is truly amazing, not just in the electric utility, in all of our utilities. And most of it, we've done with a carrot rather than a stick. It seems that whenever Sacramento wants to impose something on cities, they want to put in penalties. We had, I put solar panels on my roof in the last 30 days and just got my first electric bill, which was almost nothing for, for electricity, being made, generated right there on the roof. We, Lompoc will give you a rebate for putting solar on your roof that is almost double what you'll find in a rebate from PG&E or Southern California Edison Company. I, I got a $12,000 check back from the city towards the cost of putting those things on my roof. We're, I was told by a member of staff who calls San Luis Obispo that we have more residential solar panels in our city than San Luis does. And they're known as a pretty responsible, environmental, environmentally conscious community. When you look at our, when you look at our solid waste issues in Lompoc, we divert far more than the state standards into our recycle and material not put in the ground. When you look at the weight alone of the electronic e-waste that we turned in to recycle last year, instead of putting old TVs and other electronic material that, that contains hazardous material into the ground, we put, we turned in better than double the tonnage that Santa Maria, and they're double our population, turned in last year. So we've tried to make it friendly, easy for people to do the right thing. You look at the new, the new sewer treatment plant. We're returning to the river water after we've used it, and it's been cleaned so that it's suitable to go back into the environment for the next people that may want to use it. And, and so I'm really proud in all areas. Last meeting, we bought that very low emission diesel bus for our commute to get cars off the highway and to, and to stop polluting with all the traffic that goes to, to Galita for jobs. We've, we've, we've done it all, not because somebody's holding a stick over our head, and that was the message, the, the major message we tried to give the legislature yesterday, was leave our city alone and just let us go do what's right. Thank you for the comment. Any other comments? Seeing none, that concludes this meeting. I don't think anybody wants to sit here the rest of the night without any agenda, so we'll adjourn.